Commissioner Carter.
Present.
Commissioner Verba.
Present.
Commissioner Bailey.
Present.
Commissioner Miller. Commissioner Green has an excused absence. Commissioner Follmio.
Here.
Commissioner Yales.
Present.
Commissioner Bunch has an excused absence and Commissioner Larson has an absence.
I motion to approve the minutes.
Second.
Get a vote, please.
Hi. I'm so sorry, but I can't hear Joanne.
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought my mic was on. I'm sorry. I really wasn't supposed to be here. Okay. Thank you. Sorry. All righty, the minutes have been approved. Any business from the public, so persons wanting to provide comments may email written comments to cdaa@albanyoregon.gov, including your name before noon on the day of the meeting, to comment virtually during the meeting, register by emailing cdaa@albanyoregon.gov before noon on the day of the meeting with your name. The chair will call upon those who have registered to speak. If you appear in person at the meeting, please register to speak. Okay, on our agenda now is quasi judicial public hearing regarding planning file AD-01-24. Have all commission members received a copy of the agenda packet materials and are you familiar with them? Yep. I will call to order the quasi judicial public hearing at 5:18 PM. If you wish to testify, there were two options available which were described on the agenda. Do any members wish to declare conflict of interest? Do any members wish to report any ex parte contact? Do any members wish to abstain from participating in the proceedings?
So, I don't know if there's ex parte, so the Landmarks Committee just a week or so ago heard this and I'm on that committee. I've also, years ago, I spent quite a bit of time in the building, but I don't see where it makes it, makes it impossible for me to decide this.
Okay, great. Thank you, Bill. Does anyone wish to challenge the planning commission's right to determine this matter or the participation of any commission member in the hearing and decision? If so, please turn on your camera and raise your hand to be called upon. If you are attended by phone, please unmute yourself and state your name so you can be called up. Okay, at this time I call for the reading of the meeting procedures.
Alyssa? Yes. For all those wishing to testify, please be aware that you must raise an issue with enough detail to afford the planning commission and parties an opportunity to respond to the issue if you later want to raise that issue on appeal. Testimony and evidence must be directed towards the approval standards staff will describe or other criteria in the comprehensive plan or development code that you believe apply to the decision. If additional documents or evidence are provided by any party, the planning commission may allow a continuance or leave the record open to allow the parties a reasonable opportunity to respond. Failure of the applicant to raise a constitutional or other issues relating to the proposed conditions of approval with enough detail to allow the local government or its designee to respond to the issues precludes an action for damages in circuit court.
Thank you. At this time I call for the staff report from project planner Alyssa Shremz.
All right. Good evening. My name is Alyssa Shremz. I don't believe most of you have met me yet. I mainly do landmarks commission, but I'm also a planner here with the city of Albany. So before you today, you could have sworn I'm screen sharing. Can everybody see the slideshow on their screens? No. Amazing. Let me restart that. Let's see what happens. Huh. The one that they want to take an exception to or an adjustment is having to screen rooftop mechanical equipment. So, the notice for this hearing was mailed on September 23 of 2024. The property was posted on October 20, or October 1 of 2024, and the planning commission has the ability to make a decision today. All right, so this is the property from Second Avenue. It is the, what we call the old federal building or the post office. So this is a view from Second. The mechanical units will be visible from Broad Albin Street. So you can see the one-story addition from 1960 or so, and that's where they're proposing to put the mechanical units. So primarily you won't see it from Second Avenue, but you could theoretically see somewhat of a vantage point on Broad Albin. So the adjustment criteria here are described in Albany Development Code 2.080 using the following criteria. I have, well, they're blocked on one of them, but on the bottom one you can see I've got the mechanical unit circled. So that is where they're proposed to be located. And then on this image you can see an overhead view of how many mechanical units are proposed. So just some additional background, the landmarks commission has approved the other exterior alterations mentioned in the application as well as the mechanical units to be placed, provided the adjustment is approved today. And then the reason ultimately that you guys are hearing this and it wasn't decided on by landmarks commission is our code just says that the decision body for adjustments is either the hearings board or planning commission, and it does not mention allowing the landmarks commission to review a different type three application when approved in conjunction with a historic file. So it's just a quirk of our code. We're actually proposing to change it, but for now this is the procedure we have to go through in order to approve the adjustment. So you have three options before you. So you can approve the request as proposed, approve the request with amendments or conditions, or deny the request. Staff does recommend option one, approving the request as proposed, and you'll also find a proposed motion in your motion packet. And then are there any questions I can answer for you guys?
Clarifying questions for Alyssa. Hold on, I, Karen or Sersi?
Alyssa, yeah, I think, I don't know if I missed something, but why do they have this equipment on the roof?
So the applicant will go into further detail, but basically it's because you have, it's a corner lot, so there's Broad Albin and Second Avenue, and then there is a public alleyway running parallel to Second Avenue, and then basically a driveway with parking on the last remaining side of the building. So there's not really any available locations on the ground to locate the equipment. And I'll go back to slides here. You can see all the squares represented. Those are individual mechanical units, so they need quite a few for the building.
Me for the work that he's going to be doing.
Um, so the mechanical units are proposed to serve the building after the work is done. But yes, this is an HVAC upgrade with the structure.
Okay.
Yeah.
Any other questions from staff? Okay, we will now be taking public testimony first from those in favor of the application, followed by those in opposition or with concerns, and finally from anyone who is neutral. If anyone wishes to enter an exhibit into the record as part of your testimony, please briefly describe the exhibit, then email it to cdaa@albanyoregon.gov. Written testimony that was submitted by the deadline via email have been uploaded to the city's website as part of the agenda packet. Currently, we don't have anyone registered to speak during this meeting, so if there's anyone in the audience who may want to speak.
Hello, my name is Laura LaRocque. I'm the applicant's representative for the file that's before you this evening. So thank you, Alyssa, for providing an overview of the staff report and the proposal that's in front of you. The particular building is on a National Register Historic District. The building itself is undergoing a complete renovation. Part of that renovation process is getting special tax assessment and also federal tax credits for restoring the building to its former historic character. So much effort and thought has gone into the building design, interior and exterior of the site. The interior of the building is going to be converted from commercial uses to boutique hotel with multiple dwelling units that will need modern conveniences such as heat and air. On this particular building, it is, has a quite a large roof area above it. So when you're looking at placement of mechanical equipment, you look at outside or above the building to see where it can be best hidden from the public eye. On this one, it has an attic space that is quite sizable, so a person can stand up, walk around in that area, and there's just not a great architectural design to be able to place the mechanical units on the top of the actual original portion of the building. The lower addition was added in the 60s when the building was converted into the Albany City Hall. This portion of the building is relatively modern, not historic in nature. It is also pretty well obscured from the main street facade. So the placement of the mechanical equipment was placed in that area because the building itself screens it from one of the public rideaways, offsetting the equipment on the one-story addition, will also help to obscure it from Broad Albin. And typically mechanical units or mechanical functions are placed in the alley side just because those are not very frequent in from the public right way. As staff had indicated, the mechanical equipment is not ideally placed in the front of the building or the side because both of those, essentially the property lines, is the interior side of a sidewalk. The rear is directly adjacent to an alleyway, and there's always concerns that even if there was space, that those might be damaged by cars in that area. And then the third consideration would be on the adjacent side, but that is the only location on site for parking for the future tenants of the building. So we feel like what we have presented is the best way to screen the mechanical equipment. There's some design considerations that you could take into place, but anything that you add to this building will actually draw your eye to modern equipment and design elements that is not particularly something that you desire in a historic building. So we're asking for a deviance in the code standard to allow this one aspect to differ from the standard code. That was my presentation. Does anybody have any questions on the proposal?
Yeah, so to be clear, you were before landmarks, I'm on landmarks, and what we kind of decided is correct is that the code might call for putting a screen around those, that equipment, but there's so much equipment up there that the screen itself would become an architectural element that would then not be historically correct. And so the idea was that, well, there's a lot of units up there, but at least it's better anyone looking or happens to see them, but no, that's just a unit, not part of the original building, which would be confusing for, from the historic point of view. Isn't that how that landed?
Yes, so the building architect had two different considerations for screening. One was creating a false kind of rooftop wall area, but that would not be fitting with a one-story box-style addition. The other was to place a metal-type screen along the top of the roof that would essentially be slightly higher than the mechanical equipment itself. It'd be pretty simple in design to not distract from the building itself, but even a simple design at this size and scale that it would need to be would attention to that particular aspect where attention should be best put on the building architectural features that are desirable. So there was considerations that were put in place, but ultimately, in comparison to the other historic buildings in the downtown historic district, most of those are unscreened currently. This would not be unfitting to what you'd find in the commercial downtown area. And if there was any other viable option, it would have been selected, but in this case, due to the historic nature of the building and the fact it will not have any negative impacts on the general public, we're asking for just a slight deviation from the code.
And one more point, you kind of mentioned it, but just to, because this is applying for the tax credits, you actually have a National Parks Representative for Historic Places is actually overviewing all the plans and what's being done, and they've agreed that this is the best way forward as well as that, right?
Yeah, so to take advantage of the historic preservation kind of tools that you have available, this building has a preservation plan that's approved by Lynn County, and it also has a preservation approved by the National Park Service and the State Historic Preservation Office. So there's, as well as approval from the Albany Landmarks Commission. So there's at least three different jurisdictional bodies that review and have decided that this particular feature would be best and able to preserve the historic nature of the building.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? Karen or Sersi? Go ahead, Karen.
Oh, yeah, I was just wondering, what is this building used for?
The building had many uses in the past, typically commercial in nature. It's currently completely being renovated, excuse me. Many of the aspects are being demolished on the inside, so any sort of added partition walls or things of that nature have been removed. It's essentially vacant today because it's under a full remodel.
So, but it's structurally sound to hold all that equipment?
It is, yes.
Okay. And then how long is it going to have to be, all this equipment up there?
It would be for the life of the building, that we see for the near future.
Oh.
Perhaps until the next remodel occurs or changes occur in how we heat and cool buildings.
Oh, okay.
Thank you, Karen. Any other questions?
Thank you for your time.
I will now take public testimony from those who did not register to speak beforehand. If you would like to speak, turn on your camera, raise your hand to be called upon by the chair, and unmute. If you're attended by phone, please unmute yourself and state your name so the chair can call on you to speak. Okay, does any member of the audience wish to speak in favor of the application? Does any member of the audience wish to speak in opposition or express concerns about the application? Does any member of the audience wish to speak neutrally of the application? I'm assuming you do not have any response to any testimony that was permitted for the applicant. Does anyone have procedural questions they would like to raise at this time? So I declare this public hearing closed at 5:34 PM. Does the planning commission wish to discuss this case or ask questions of staff? Any more questions?
Well, I know with residential, they're starting to require the heating and air units inside of the building, inside the house. So that's not how it is commercially?
So, and I declared this before the meeting. I'm fairly familiar with this building, did an audit of the building, walked through it. So it goes back, it's to the first part of the last centuries, and it was variously outfitted with different things, but the most recent was a boiler system and radiators and that kind of thing. And as we're trying to be green, this approach is to try to be cost-effective for a new use for the building, which is going to be housing. And so each kind of housing unit needs its own units, so I guess that's how they arrived upon it. It seems like a reasonable solution, given that the site is so small and that you need to get those units because of their heat producing and the sound and stuff as far away from the public as you can. And I mean, ideally, it could be more hidden, but there's really no room on the site. I think that's how they backed into it. They sort of described it in more detail at the landmarks meeting. But given the historic nature of the building, we're very reluctant to tear parts of the building apart for HVAC or whatever, and this is kind of the least invasive way you can do it. And I know that because I've done a lot of historic preservation, so I think that's how they backed into it, and we could ask Laura to come back up, but.
So you can't go inside the building. You can't go inside that little building.
Well, half of the system, so you're seeing the outside part, these are split systems. Basically, you have a compressor that either draws heat or cooling out of the air. It's an air-to-air heat compressor, and then inside the unit is, that's supplied by coolant lines, you have your heating and air conditioning. So this is, you know, you, the alternative, I suppose, not really, would be a through-the-wall unit or something, or stuck in a window, which we really frown upon. It doesn't lend itself to a massive system, which I'm not sure where that would go. It's not like one tenant in the building. It's a multiple tenants in housing situation. Virtually, all if not most, you, you know, retrofits of this nature end up with this solution. You can see hotels with something called a PTAC, which is a through-the-wall unit, but you can't really have it all contained within the unit because you have to pull the heat or the cool from somewhere. It just, it doesn't work physically to have it all within the unit.
Okay.
Any other discussion? Is there a motion?
I move to approve the proposed amendment to ADC 8.390, parenthesis 3, parenthesis B, compatibility standards. This motion is based on the findings and conclusions of the October 7, 2024 staff report and the findings in support of the application made by the planning commission during deliberations on this matter.
A second.
There has been a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? I'll call for the vote. All those in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? So now we are on the agenda item for legislative and quasi judicial public hearing regarding planning file CP-01-24. Have all commission members received a copy of the agenda packet of materials and are you all familiar with them?
Yes.
I call to order this legislative quasi judicial public hearing at 5:40 PM. If you wish to testify, again, there were two options available which were described on the agenda. Do any member of the commission wish to declare conflict of interest? Do any members wish to abstain from participating in the, in the proceedings, I'm sorry? Do any members wish to report any ex parte contact?
I have a history with the property in question, so I know the members that will be talking about it, the previous owner and the current owner.
I know the applicant, but I feel I can be unbiased and make a fair decision.
Great. Thank you. Does, do any members wish to abstain from participating in the proceedings? Does anyone wish to challenge the planning commission's right to determine this matter or the participation of any commission member in the hearing and decision?
Joanne, we have a hand up. Alyssa?
From where? I'm sorry. There was a hand up? Karen?
I didn't raise my hand.
Sersi, did you raise your hand? Is the hand is still up? Okay. Okay. At this time I call for the reading of the procedures. So Jennifer?
For all those wishing to testify, please be aware that you must raise an issue with enough detail to afford the planning commission and parties an opportunity to respond to the issue if you later wish, sorry, if you later want to raise that issue on appeal. Testimony and evidence must be directed towards the approval standards staff will describe or in other criteria in the comprehensive plan or development code that you believe apply to the decision. If additional documents or evidence are provided by any party, the planning commission may allow a continuance or leave the record open to allow the parties a reasonable opportunity to respond. Failure of the applicant to raise constitutional or other issues related to proposed conditions of approval with enough detail to allow the local government or its designee to respond to the issue precludes an action for damages in circuit court.
Great. At this time I call for the staff report.
Hello, I'm Jennifer Sappelo. So before you is a few applications all being run concurrently. So we have a comprehensive plan amendment, a zoning map amendment, a partition, and a natural resource impact review. The subject property is located at 316 Grand Prairie Road. The applicant and the property owner is Taylor Davidow. Kim Rickettelli with Green Cascades LLC is the authorized representative of this application package. This application is a request to partition the 4.3 acre subject property into one 2.8 acre parcel, referred to as parcel one, and a 1.55 acre parcel referred to as parcel two. The applicant also proposes to amend the comprehensive plan map designation of parcel one from low-density residential to medium-density residential, and to change the zoning designation from residential single-dwelling unit to residential medium-density. Parcel two will remain with the existing comprehensive plan designation of low-density residential and the zoning map designation of single residential. The property in question currently has the comprehensive plan designation of low-density residential. The compatible zones consist of residential single-dwelling units with 10,000 square feet down to 5,000 square feet, Hackelman Monte, residential reserve, office professional, and neighborhood commercial. The surrounding properties are predominantly low-density residential with some existing institutional developments. The applicant proposes to amend the northern parcel with a comprehensive plan map designation of medium-density residential. The property is currently zoned low, sorry, residential 6.5. The applicant proposes the zone amendment for the proposed parcel one, and that would change the zoning to residential medium-density. The applicant also includes the partition, and that is parcel one will be created at, again, approximately 2.8 acres, which is the northern parcel, and will have direct access to Grand Prairie Road and will contain approximately half of Perry Winkle Creek and the associated riparian corridor. Parcel two is the southern portion and will be created at approximately 1.55 acres, will retain access to Mountain View by an existing 24-foot access easement. Will also have half of Perry Will also have half of Periwinkle Creek and the associated riparian corridor. A natural resource impact review is required for any land division within a riparian corridor pursuant to the Albany Development Code, Article 6.300A1. The applicant does not propose any ground disturbing development with this application package. Periwinkle Creek also has a flood plain that is contained within the channel of the creek. The applicant submitted a flood plain study as required in Albany Development Code, Article 6.110, for land divisions greater than four acres or for lots, whichever is greater, which establishes the base flood elevation for the reach of the Periwinkle Creek that retransacts this property. That study can be found in Article E of the staff report. The surrounded, the, sorry, the subject property is naturally divided by Periwinkle Creek. The northern portion of the property is bordered by institutional development and uses to the east, west, and north, with some low density development to the north. The southern portion of the property is bordered by low density residential development. The process for this is a type four land use decision for the command amendment, which has the decision criteria in Albany Development Code, Article 2.220 sub three zoning map amendment, which is the development code 2.740. The partition, which is in the development code, Article 11.180, and natural resource impact review, which is Article six, missed the dot, but point two two. This went out to agency notice. Public notices, planning commission makes the recommendation and city council is, has the deciding vote. The notice for public hearing regarding this application was mailed to property owners within 300 feet on September 23rd. The staff report with exhibits was posted on the planning commission and planning projects homepage on October 7th, and the site was posted on October 1st, centrally located along the Grand Prairie Road. That is the conclusion of my staff report.
Thank you, Jennifer, for going over that all very clearly for us, laying it out, and thank you, commission, for hearing our applicant. We don't have much to add to that. Oh, I'm sorry. My name is Kim Richatelli. I am speaking on behalf of the applicant Tyler and Amy. We don't have a lot to add to that staff report. I think it's pretty clearly laid out. Our intention here, there's no development proposed with this partition and rezone. We simply want to divide the property at the natural boundary of the creek. We believe that the northern half of the property leads itself to a different type of development than the southern half, and this would be a step in the way of future applications.
Does any commission members have any clarifying questions for the staff or the applicant at this time?
Could this land lock this second piece of property? I mean, can there be road access through the riparian corridor?
So the property, the southern portion of the property already has an existing 24, 24 foot wide easement to Mountain View. So the southern portion has an existing easement, and the northern portion has direct access to Grand Prairie. There is not a proposal to cross the riparian corridor. Our staff would not.
Is that where the easement is?
No, the easement here, let me pull that back up here. So in your packet, under the partition. The attachment B two has the property oriented north and south. Along the southern portion, there is where it shows a 24 foot accessing utility easement. Also share it here.
Clarifying questions at this time?
So.
Okay.
It's a little harder to see here, but the, oh, okay. Okay, sorry, I didn't hear that.
Would it be possible to bring up the, it's the last page in our packet. It's the site plan 1.0 or something. It shows sort of a street down the middle and the layout of. It's on the very back page of my. Yeah, no, it looks like this. On the very back. It's just on the very back of the packet.
Attachment F. Sorry, it's a little bit in here.
Yeah, there we go.
So this is an urban conversion plan. Anytime you create a land or do a division that is double the size of the minimum lot size, so greater than, in this case, 13,000 square feet, you have to do an urban conversion plan showing how the property could potentially be further divided and developed. We require it, but it is not set in stone. So while this is a proposal, if they choose to sell the property, someone else could come up with another proposal. This is just showing, hey, it could be further divided and meet city standards.
So is it possible to zoom in on that picture a little bit? I just wanna, I'm having a hard time reading my print because it's very light. Just trying to get a sense of what the size of those lots are on there. And so what you're saying, then this is directed to staff, is that when you do this kind of application to convert the use, you give an example of what it might look like once it's converted and further subdivided, right?
Just for land divisions. So as one of the requirements in our approval of a partition, so it's not necessary for the code amendment or, or sorry, the zone amendment or the comprehensive plan map amendment, but for the partition itself, it's required to show that it could be further divided.
But this doesn't, this isn't necessarily what will end up there, right?
Correct. And they're indicating smaller lot sizes, it looks like around 37,000 square feet to 4,000, which would match the RM zoning district because the minimum lot size there is 3,500, whereas in the R is 6.5, the minimum lot size is 6,500 square feet. So they're showing it could be developed with the smaller lot sizes if the comprehensive plan and the.
Also, if it's converted to, now, I'm not sure, I'm totally up to speed on this, but if it's medium density, then it could be apartments, correct?
Potentially, yeah. Or it could be townhouse development.
Or townhouses or something.
Which townhouses, if it goes through townhouse, are each individual lots that are viewed as attached single dwelling units?
Thank you.
Yeah.
Hey, well, we'll now take, be taking public testimony first from those in favor of the application, followed by those in opposition or with concerns, and finally from anyone who was neutral. Anyone wishes to enter an exhibit into the record as part of their testimony, please be briefly describe the exhibit and then email it to cdaa@albanyoregon.gov. Written testimony that was submitted by the deadline via email have been uploaded on the city website as part of the agenda packet. Those who registered to speak during this meeting will be called upon to present verbal testimony. We'll ask you for your name and address. So we will now be taking public testimony from Gary Short. And just as a reminder, the commission is only allowed to make a decision on the code, the development code for the city. We can't make any decisions on the land use itself. So just wanted to clarify our role here and what we're capable of doing.
Hey, I'm Gary Short, 3302 South Mountain View Drive Southeast. Come tonight basically just to share with you how I feel, and I feel like this whole thing is a waste of time. When there's a 57 page report out there, ready to go to the city without even talking to us, I don't feel that anybody cares what we have to say. I could be totally wrong, but that's just the way I feel, and that's what I came for just to tell you. I know that it's going to be good revenue for the city. I mean, the water bill alone, it should make a fortune, let alone the taxes and the building permits. But at the same time, nobody bothered to talk to us. He's just made the report. So that's all I came for, just to share. We, I, we feel better about the report if they had talked to us first and it came out. And I feel like we're left out of the whole thing, that we're just wasting our time being here. That's how I feel. That's all.
Excuse me. So do you have any particular concerns?
Only that we weren't talked to first. I think that we should have been talked to first before that report was made. I don't know who all made it. I'm not a politician and I have, I'm just a voter.
Okay, I understand that perfectly, the frustration of that. But is there anything in particular?
I'm not. That's all I had to say.
Okay.
I feel we don't matter. That's all I feel.
I don't know what report, is there a report that was created that?
So when a land use application is applied for, a staff report is prepared. That is that October 7th report that you had, that is posted a week before the meeting and a week after public notice what goes out. Part of the meeting is the citizen involvement portion, as well as we were able to write in beforehand. So the only report I know that went out was the one that was posted online for October 7th.
Okay. Hold on. If you, if you want to testify, we'll give you opportunity to share your concern and help us, and so we'll stay, follow the process, if that's okay? Ready? So Tracy or Tracy and Tammy Voller?
I'll speak for both of us. I'm Tracy Voller. I address 3053 Brookside Avenue Southeast here in Albany. I guess my concern with this development and this split of the two parcels, parcel one and parcel two, is that you are requesting that us as the public give you specifics on what we feel is wrong with it, but they're providing us no specifics on what's going to be done with it. So I feel that you are asking us to do one thing, but allowing them to do something else. I would request that this board make a decision not to do anything with regard to splitting the parcels until a plan is developed on what to do with parcel one and parcel two. Secondly, parcel one is a complete mess. There is junk and people living on it, those sorts of things. It's been a complete mess for years. It was attempted to get cleaned up. I know there's been numerous notices to clean it up. Nothing's been done with it. My concern is if parcel one gets developed, that junk will move to parcel two, and I live adjacent to parcel two. So I want some reassurances from the property owners that that's not going to happen. And at this point in time, again, I see no specifics in regard to what's going on. I see a general proposal, and I can't give you specifics without getting specifics. So I would request that this not be approved.
Thank you.
Address, thank you.
My name is Curtis Pitt. I live at 3314 Mountain View Drive. And I may have missed at the beginning my spot to show my objection for Ms. Bartholomew and Mr. Bailey. I just didn't know if I was okay to speak then. I'm just going to state my objection now that two people that know the landowner should not be involved in the decision. And in regards to Mr. Short, he was talking about the staff report that came out. The end of the staff report clearly states it's the planning commission's finding to recommend to the city council that this be approved. And he's frustrated because why are we here if we're not, if you've already made your decision? That's where he's coming from. So, um, so I'm just going to read a letter. I wasn't going to be here. My work changed, so I was able to come. So I believe the rezoning of the property in question does not comply with the City of Albany Comprehensive Plan for the area. I also think it would be detrimental to the area. I've spoken with several residents in the area, and they're all completely opposed to the rezoning of the property in question. The dividing and rezoning of the property in question to medium density residential and residential medium will create traffic and safety problems, create even more problems with schools that are over capacity, destroy local wildlife and their habitat, and potentially lower the value of properties in the existing community. The amount of increased traffic on Mountain View Drive and Grand Prairie Road would cause a major safety concern to the children and pedestrians in the area. The existing community is very active with children playing and adults out walking. Recently, there was a new apartment complex built on the corner of Grand Prairie and Waverly Drive. I've spoken with several people in the community, and they have all witnessed an increased in-vehicle traffic in the area. The traffic surge during the morning rush hours will also negatively impact safety for children since students walk to school in the area. In general, the area traffic is continuing to increase, and heavy traffic is already common at the times of, in the area of Mountain View Drive, Grand Prairie Road, and Waverly Drive. This may not have been anticipated during the last rezoning approval of the apartment complex to be built at the cornerly, corner of Waverly Drive and Grand Prairie Road. Wildlife has been observed in the area, and development will destroy their habitat. I have personally witnessed a family of gray foxes that are in the area and passed by my house multiple times throughout the month. I have also witnessed bald eagles using the trees during the mating season. There are also ducks, geese that use Periwinkle Creek along the creek for a regular basis. Development of the property would push all the wildlife out of their current habitat. Property values are likely to go down in the area as well if multifamily apartments, triplexes, duplexes, or condos are built. Multifamily dwellings are inconsistent with the neighborhoods developed in the area. This is also not in line with the City of Albany Comprehensive Plan. The Comprehensive Plan states that there needs to be a demonstration of need for the proposed zoning change. For the City of Albany Comprehensive Plan, there is enough medium density land in the urban growth boundary outside of the city limits and in the village center to accommodate all residential media housing needs through 2040 per the Portland State University study. There has been no demonstration of how this zoning change will best meet the public need versus other alternatives. I believe the rezoning would only be detrimental to the current homeowners in the area. When we purchased our home in 2020, we did our due diligence and found that all the surrounding properties were designated as low density residential. We purchased our home knowing that only single family detached homes could be developed in the area. The Comprehensive Plan states that it remains responsive to the community needs. I urge the planning commission and the city council to protect the current community and the current Comprehensive Plan. The proposed change would benefit one landowner and be detrimental to the multiple homeowners in the area that purchased their homes, knowing that the area was zoned only for low density residential. I urge you to deny the Comprehensive Plan Map Amendment, the zoning map amendment, partition, and natural resource review impact request. I know my opinions are shared by many who have not managed to attend the meeting or write letters or emails. Thank you.
You.
You said my last name correctly.
Thank you for saying my last name correctly. Really happens. My name is Ed Giles. I live at 3097 Brookside Avenue. My property will border the 24-foot easement that you were asking about, which is between my property and the overdrawn, the over-access pond, if you notice in the picture. Where I have no problem with an easement in the back of my property, that's not the issue today. What I'd like to do is read a brief little statement that my wife and I prepared. Regarding the hearing set for October 14th and the above referenced case number, the state of this property currently owned by the applicants has been in a constant state of shambles and trash. We moved in in 2017 and it has been horrendous. There's been folks living there in squalor. There has been rats. There have been dogs that are wild. It's disgusting. I have photos of what it looks like today. And this is the best that it has looked, and it still does not look. And I'm happy to give these whenever. As good neighbors, we need to look out for each other. And I don't know the applicants. I don't know them at all. But I would like a good faith on their part before anything and on your part, that they can show that they're good neighbors and not this. Also, as Mr. Bowler, my neighbor, stated, we'd like to know what's going to be put there before a decision is made. We ask you not to write a blank check. Because you don't know what's going to be put there, I assume. I don't know. But we'd like to know what's going to be going in there before a decision's made here. As a homeowner which is adjacent to the property, once divided, the entire contents currently on the property, and I hope you can look at these photos, will probably move over to the property adjacent to mine. The city, we talked with the city code enforcement officers yesterday, Friday and today. They have written numerous citations. There's been a court appearance of some kind. I don't know, but I know there was. And this has never been cleaned up. This has never been taken care of. Again, I'm going to hope that you look at these photos. I don't really have anything else to add, other than the two gentlemen before me stated it very eloquently and very well.
Thank you, Mr. Giles.
We will now be taking public testimony for those who did not register to speak. If you would like to speak, turn on your camera, raise your hand to be called upon by the chair, and unmute. If you are attending by phone, please unmute yourself and state your name so the chair can call on you. Any member of the audience wish to speak in favor of the applicant? Does any member of the audience who was not registered wish to speak in opposition or express concerns about the application? Does the applicant or staff wish to respond to any testimony that was presented?
Hello, Kim Richatelli again, Green Cascades, representing the applicant. First, I want to thank everyone who came forward today with concerns on the application. We would like to address some of them and hopefully assuade any fears of some of these things that are brought up before us. First, as far as notices before the staff report, it is our understanding that we are following the application procedure per the code and we will continue to do that throughout the process. Solving the transient issue is a major concern and priority for my clients. It is something that they have been ongoing dealing with for a long time and have spent quite a bit of time themselves trying to clear the property and keep it clean of any kind of homeless encampments. No known code violations are currently ongoing, but we acknowledge that compliance with the code would be required for any land use applications and would move forward to try to do so. No access is provided across Periwinkle Creek with our proposal. And therefore, we don't believe that any ongoing or future issues that are pertaining to the Grand Prairie Road section of the property would be spreading south to the remainder of the property. It is the intention of this partition and the map amendments to separate, as I said before, the parcel along that natural boundary. Because the needs of the north and south parcel and the neighborhoods of the north and south parcel are very different. In our mind, the development of that entire parcel is very hard to plan for, comprehend, or build in its current state. We believe that this partition and map amendment could pave the way for future applications that would be done in accordance to the Albany Development Code to work towards development that will remove the vagrancy problem for all time. Obviously, development would be the vehicle for removing any kind of open parcels that are allowing this kind of action to take place. We'd like to speak to the needs. It is our understanding there's a shortage of affordable housing in the Albany area. This would be an infill development that wouldn't require new extensions of utilities, amenities, streets to provide a little bit more housing density. It would be in an area where we could link other developments to the institutions, to the existing infrastructure that we have already in the town. As far as protections to Periwinkle Creek and the Riparian Corridor, it is our intention, at this time, obviously, no development is proposed, but this partition would limit a developer's ability to make a crossing over Periwinkle Creek or in any way adversely affect that habitat area. Staff has recommended the condition that a drainage easement is put over that Riparian Corridor. And we agree with that condition, that it would be important to safeguard that natural resource and make sure that the city has access for maintenance and drainage. Finally, as far as development and future development per the code. Interestingly enough, when we were working on the traffic to study, it was determined that maximum development per residential low development density with the lot size standards could actually exceed maximum development at residential medium density. That is because the medium density has a 25-unit-per-acre cap. So medium density might change the kinds of developments there, but it would not, in fact, increase the amount of traffic or residencies that could be accessing the infrastructure. And that is everything we have to add to the comments from the public. Thank you.
I have a question. What is, what are the two parcel sizes exactly? It just didn't print out for me to see. The larger one on the south is how many acres?
So the larger one is actually on the north. The larger one will be the 4.35-acre parcel. And the smaller one is on the south. Oh, I'm sorry. The larger one is 2.8 acres and the smaller one is 1.55.
2.8 at 25 units per acre is 50, 70 units or something?
In that territory, I can pull out the...
Part of that's a riparian zone too that you'd have to take out, so.
Correct. The Riparian Corridor would obviously affect any kind of development.
Potentially, the larger parcel could have up to 50 units on it?
Give me one second. Let me pull the traffic analysis. So if developed with townhomes, possible units on a residential medium-density lot would be 70. Whereas if it was developed under the RS 6.5 designation, the possible units would be 72 with a minimum lot size of 1,700 square feet.
So you said 70, right?
Correct. Yes.
Any other questions? Yeah, I don't know, Cersei, any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Does anyone have procedural questions they would like to raise at this time? Yes, you can come forward and state your name again. How that procedure would work?
I'm not too sure how to proceed on that one either. If members have had ex parte communication and they feel like they can make a decision unbiasedly and they have stated that ex parte communication, the bylaws allow you to continue on. If there is a concern from a member of the assembly, such as people giving me testimony, they can always, it is a grounds for appeal. In this case, this is just a recommendation. So there will be another hearing at city council where that could come up, that it felt like it was unfairly brought up. But I don't know how to proceed.
Yeah, I'm not sure either.
How close are we to a quorum? I mean, we're...
We are at a quorum.
So if two were recused, were to recuse themselves, we'd be down to four and there wouldn't be a quorum. So there could not be a recommendation tonight either to approve, recommend approval, deny, or recommend approval with modifications to the application.
I'm gonna look...
I can't hear you.
Sorry. Because there's no clear answer and I'm not sure how to proceed since there has been a concern raised by members of the audience, of participation, two commission members. I'm not comfortable in moving this forward at this time because I don't know the procedure.
So Kim, is it time for us to discuss this or?
Procedurally, wait, so what can happen is... Give us a minute. We're going to call city council. Attorney, sorry.
Okay, yeah.
Because if you were, if the two people were to recuse and you're down to four, it would just be a continuation of the planning commission to a date, a date, set time. So you guys would pick the date of which that continuation, we would all come back again and potentially move forward with a quorum. The problem is, is all testimony given may have to be given again because if you're recused and then new people are in, they weren't here for the testimony and they may not be able to make a decision on that.
So a question. So technically, we're not deciding this issue. We're just giving a recommendation, correct? The actual decision comes at city council.
So if you recommend approval, it goes to city council. If you recommend approval with modifications, it goes to city council. If you recommend denial, it's done unless the applicant appeals to city council. So you are making a quasi-decision.
Okay, okay. Thank you. So, and so that's important, yeah.
So give us one moment. We're calling. But in the interim, if you guys have any questions for me.
Should we close this part of the hearing to discuss it among ourselves or do we? That's the next thing, right?
Yeah, that would be next. But like I said, I have some concerns right now. So why don't we move forward and close the hearing and then we can discuss it, but I don't... Can't close yet. Gotta wait to hear a decision? Okay. Well, then we can't close the hearing.
We can't close the hearing. Why?
You could potentially close the floor, which means no new testimony can be given. No new rebuttal can be given, but you can't close the meeting, the hearing itself.
Okay. Well, so someone is talking to council about...
Correct, yeah.
And so we're just sort of waiting for that. It's an interesting dilemma. I've never, I mean, can we go ahead and talk or should we just be quiet until that?
I would wait.
Okay, thank you.
Would we like to take a recess? So we can all stretch our legs and go to the bathroom? Okay, we'll take a quick recess. Alrighty, looks like we're all back.
Yes, we are all back.
So, the the word is if you claim ex parte communication, you just have communicated, you are still, and you feel like you can be unbiased, you can still participate in any public hearing. If you have financial gain, then you cannot participate. So, if you are invested in the project in some shape or form, or you have property nearby that could possibly benefit due to financial gain, then you would absolutely have to recuse yourself. So Do either member want to recuse themselves?
I will.
Okay, so Skylar's going to recuse?
I don't have any interest in those properties myself.
Alrighty.
Great, and I see that Karen's going with us, so we don't have a quorum anyway?
Oh, oh, wait, wait, she's back.
Oh, yeah, she's there, she is. Well, it's still what the decision is and I'm not sure the next steps, but we are planning to continue the meeting, this hearing on the 28th of October. So, hopefully, we have enough Planning Commission members in attendance and we can, they can hear and make a good wise decision and recommendation to the City Council.
Okay, so, President Miller, are you wanting to keep the floor open so additional testimony can come during that time or did you want to close the floor for any new additional testimony? I mean, if you close it, just nothing can come in during that time, but once the next meeting happens, more testimony can happen all the way up to City Council. So, it's, in this case, it doesn't really matter which way.
Okay, well, let's
I think normally we leave it open.
Yeah, I would leave it open.
Okay.
So, we're done with this for now until the 28th?
Since we still have a quorum, we can ask any clarifying questions of staff while you're here and then we just wouldn't be able to take a vote or make a motion until the next continued hearing.
Is there any other clarifying questions? Well, this will continue on October 28th at the 515 meeting.
Correct.
One thing, just to clarify, so we can't like require an applicant to tell us what they're going to do for a partition, right? I mean, like, we're just going
Correct. So, all we can do is judge an application based on the criteria of the code and the items provided. So, it is the burden of the applicant to provide evidence that they meet all of the criteria of the code.
That was kind of just to share with the
Yeah.
But that's our only role, unfortunately, that we're limited to. So, righty. Well, we will continue this once again on October 28th. We have more commission members in attendance and more information that we need to, we have any questions as commissioners. All right, any business from the commission? How about staff updates?
Well, we now have a Planning Commission for October 28th at 515. It'll be a continuation of this hearing. We also have nominations for our hearing board. So, our hearing board can, is made up of three Planning Commissioners. We usually go by a volunteer. At this time, we don't have anyone. The hearing board hears cases like conditional uses, the adjustment that you previously heard, kind of the smaller things that don't necessarily need to go to Planning Commission or to City Council. It is a tool that we use to get applications approved a little faster because the hearing board can meet weekly if needed, any Thursday, whereas the Planning Commission's only certain Mondays. I know we don't have a ton of people, but do we have some volunteers who want to serve on the hearings board? Stacy?
How often does the hearing board meet? I know you said you could meet as needed, but is there a lot of things that come to the hearing boards?
I volunteered for it before and I was on for a couple of years or something. And I don't know, maybe we met once or something.
Yeah, in the two years I've been here, I've been to the, I've had two things go to a hearings board and then a few things come here, like comp plan amendments, zone amendments, code changes will always come to the Planning Commission. But again, like conditional uses, adjustments, smaller things like that, depending on a cluster development or a PD would go to potentially do a hearings board. So, it's not very often, no.
What else wishing to volunteer to serve on the hearings board?
I believe Karen volunteered last year, was that, or the year before?
It's typically three, is it three?
I believe it's, yeah, there's
A bill you're volunteering?
Well, yeah, I'll go ahead and do it.
Okay. Perfect. And we can bring it up at the 28th meeting as well?
I'll volunteer.
Oh, okay, perfect. Well, I got three all in a row. And I don't need to bring it up next meeting.
Thank you. Alrighty, as stated, our next meeting is October 28th and there's no other business for the commission, I declare the meeting adjourned. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Commissioners.